Okay, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Please all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. This is the zoning board of adjustment of the Township of North Brunswick meeting, May 15th, 2018. The notice requirements of the law have been satisfied. Notices have been sent by certified mail to the Home News Tribune. Receipts are on file in the Township Clerk's office. We ask that anyone that has a cellphone to please turn it off during the meeting. All variances granted tonight will expire if the building permit, zoning permit, or occupancy permit is not applied for within one year of the granting of the variance. No new applications will begin after 10:00 PM, and the meeting will adjourn at 11:00 PM. Any application may be discussed at the next agenda meeting. We need to take care of some memorializations.
Roll call.
Let's go for the roll call first.
Mr. Boat?
Here.
Mr. Farhat?
Here.
Ms. Howard?
Here.
Mr. Paul Castro?
Here.
Mr. Wright?
Ms. Malbone?
Here.
Mr. Badley?
Mr. Shadie?
Here.
Mr. McGrath?
Okay, we need to take care of some memorializations, starting with Judy Langzum, 359 Tremont Avenue regarding Block 257, Lot 10. Bulk variances to construct a 13-foot by 20-foot, one-story addition to the front of the existing ranch-style dwelling located in the R2 Single Family Residential Zone District. Roll call, please.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Second.
Mr. Boat?
Yes.
Mr. Farhat?
Yes.
Ms. Howard?
Yes.
Ms. Malbone?
Yes.
Mr. Shadie?
Yes.
The second is Louis Iyani Jr., 964 Linwood Place regarding Block 214, Lot 1. Setback variance to erect a six-foot privacy fence, a portion encroaching into the front yard area of Shira Road, located in the R3 Single Family Residential Zone District.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Boat?
Yes.
Mr. Farhat?
Yes.
Ms. Howard?
Yes.
Ms. Malbone?
Yes.
Mr. Shadie?
Yes.
Third one is Wawa Livingston Avenue Partnership, 933 Livingston Avenue and 950 Joyce Kilmer Avenue, Garden Block 98, Lots 1 and 2. Site plan use and bulk variances to demolish the existing car wash building and accessory structures on the site and to construct a new Wawa convenience store of approximately 5,585 square feet, along with a covered canopy fueling station, onsite parking, stormwater facilities, landscaping, signage, and related improvements fronting along Livingston Avenue, and consisting of 16 fueling stations for gasoline and diesel fuel located in the C1 Neighborhood Commercial Zone District. Could I have a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, before someone moves this, I did make a couple changes late this afternoon. I didn't bring the copies with me, but I did have Ms. Howard as voting in favor of this. She voted no, so that's a significant change, which I'll get to you, Chris, tomorrow.
I agree with her.
Okay, no problem.
Okay, noted. Could I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Boat?
Yes.
Mr. Farhat?
Yes.
Ms. Malbone?
Yes.
Yes. We have a request to carry the application to June 19th, 2018, and there'll be no further notice required regarding the Si Pariwarr Inc., 2351, 2353, 2355 Route 130 regarding Block 148, Lots 108, 109, and 110. It's a use variance to demolish all existing dwellings and accessory structures and to construct a two-level with a basement, 14,000-square-feet building, housing a prayer hall, dining room, library and study rooms, meditation area, warm-up kitchen, and lobby area located in the general office zone. Could I have a motion, please?
Motion to carry, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Second.
Roll call. We're gonna have to wait for Kristen for the roll call unless Mike wants to do it. Okay, roll call.
Mr. Boat?
Yes.
Mr. Farhat?
Yes.
Ms. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Paul Castro?
Yes.
Ms. Malbone?
Yes.
Mr. Badley?
Yes.
Mr. Shadie?
Yes. Okay, we have a new application. Builders Pro LLC, 951 Edward Street, regarding Block 151, Lot 10, minor subdivision use and bulk variances to demolish the existing dwelling and all structures, subdivide the existing 12,500-square-foot lot into two 6,250-square-foot lots, and construct two detached 40-foot by 47-foot single-family dwellings and other improvements located in the I2 Industrial Zone District.
Mr. Chairman, I know you've spoken to me about this, and you do have a conflict of interest, so I understand you're gonna recuse yourself from this application, so you certainly are excused for the evening. And Ms. Malbone, I know if you have an issue, you'd like to leave, that's not a problem.
If there is anybody here for the application dealing with 2351, 2353, 2355 Route 130, that matter's gonna be carried to June 19th.
Without further notice. You will not receive any further notice. Is anyone here for that application this evening? No? Okay. And Ms. Malbone, as I said, if you'd like to leave or stay, that's your prerogative, but we do have enough voting members here.
Thank you.
So I'll excuse myself, and have a good evening, folks.
Mr. Paul Castro, would you like to resume the chairmanship for this evening? Okay, so I think we've announced the application. Mr. Sermonero, the floor is yours.
Mr. Chairman, member of the boards, my name is Dominic Sermonero, and I represent Builders Pro on this application. As the chairman had stated, it concerns 959 Edwin Street, Block 151, Lot 10. We are seeking a minor subdivision into two lots, together with a use variance, as this is an industrial zone, and also various bulk variances. It is present tonight are Mr. Ginsburg, who is the principal of Builders Pro LLC, and Mr. Paul Fletcher, who will testify on behalf of the applicant. Mr. Ginsburg is here. He has been before this board on several occasions. I think the board is familiar with the type of houses that he builds. It was not my intention to call him, but if there are questions from the board, he's here and available to answer those questions and testify. So if there are questions at this point, I suppose it would be sworn, and then he could answer those questions. If not, I'd be ready to move on to Mr. Fletcher.
That's fine, Mr. Sermonero.
Is that okay, Mrs. Jackson? Thank you. So I will call Mr. Fletcher.
Yeah, come on up here, Ms. Fletcher.
You want him at the podium or here?
Wherever you're comfortable.
I assumed it was okay for me to be here.
We'll kick you out if it was.
I know.
Mr. Fletcher, please raise your right hand. Swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, self-evident. All right, please state your name, spelling your last name, professional affiliation for the record.
Yes, it's Paul J. Fletcher, F-L-E-T-C-H-E-R. I'm a professional engineer, professional planner, licensed in New Jersey, and the principal of Fletcher Engineering.
Mr. Fletcher has appeared before this board on several occasions. I'd ask that you accept his credentials.
Yes. Mr. Fletcher, you're gonna testify for engineering and planning this evening?
That's correct.
Yes, Mr. Fletcher's been here before. We accept his qualifications.
Thank you, Mr. Paul Castro. Fletcher, what I would ask is, you've had an opportunity, have you not, to review the application?
Yes.
You've also had an opportunity to review the township's engineering report, is that correct?
That is correct.
All right. I'd like you, if you would, to testify before the board as to the positive and negative criterias on this application. Would you take the opportunity to testify as to that at this point first?
Certainly. I'd just like to give a brief introduction for the application. As it was mentioned, this property is a 12,500-square-foot property, has a single-family dwelling located on it. The applicant proposes to subdivide it, creating two lots, demolishing the existing site improvements. It's located in the I2 Industrial Zone, which requires a minimum lot size of three acres. We're proposing .1435 acres, or 6,250 square feet each. There are a number of other bulk variances being requested, not only area but lot width, 6,2 and 1/2 versus 350 feet, lot depth, 100 feet versus 350 feet. Front yard setback, 30 versus 60 that's required in the zone. Single and combined side yards, 11.25 is proposed, single, 22.5 combined. The requirement in the zone is 40 and 80 respectively. Rear yard setback required is 75, proposed is 23 for each of the dwellings. And lastly, we need a use variance. This is not a permitted use, therefore use variance is required. I would point out to the board that in the I2 Zone, a property of this size has no buildable area. The setbacks overlap, leaving no pliable building envelope. When it comes to the positive criteria, I believe that a number of the purposes of the Administrative Land Use Law are advanced. Firstly, the general welfare. The applicant is proposing to construct two modestly-priced homes, allowing a new housing stock for the citizens of North Brunswick. And he's brought a application in that I believe provides the adequate air, space, and light for the two new homes. We are fully compliant, except for lot area and lot width, with the R4 Zone, which would probably be a more appropriate zone designation for this area. I think that there's no negative impact to the neighborhood. It's immediately in a small residential area in the I2 Zone. There are residential structures across the street, either side and behind on the next street. And I think that the demolition of the existing structure, which is non-conforming by use, but also even by setback, it has a front yard setback of approximately five feet, and it's certainly functionally obsolete, and it would be a much better option to have two new homes. To give the board an idea of the neighborhood, I did an exhibit based on the tax maps.
I will mark it as A1.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Paul Castro, I'll just address the board and kind of piggyback off what Mr. Fletcher was just testifying to. Our planning board, as our board is very familiar with, have been undergoing the reexamination of their tenure requirement for our master plan here in town. They have had their public hearing, they are finalized with it, and they have made recommendations, and they actually have adopted the new master plan. And this area here of this particular neighborhood where these properties are located have been suggested for rezoning to the R4 that Mr. Fletcher refers to. The next action that happens is that goes to our governing body, the council, and they actually amend our zoning ordinance. So this zone will be changed to the R4 Zone. So while we're reviewing it now, and I had a myriad of variances required now, while still the I2 Zone, it will most definitely become the R4 Zone moving forward.
All right, so what you're saying is that in the future with the new, it's not rezoning to the master plan, this will, they wanted to create more residential units in that area?
Yeah, it will be rezoned residential for, which means that any application in the future that comes in front, won't be in front of this board. It won't require a use variance, it'll be in front of our planning board.
This application would require a couple bulk variances in the future.
Yeah, it requires quite a few, because the industrial zone, yeah, now, as we sit here tonight, it's still not officially changed to the R4.
However, if it were changed, it would require looking at what the R4 Zone...
Exactly what Mr. Fletcher just represented, lot width, lot area.
Yes, just the bulk variance for lot area.
That's correct.
Yes.
And I believe everybody's got a copy of the exhibit. The subject property is highlighted in blue. I've highlighted the commercial properties in green, and I've excluded that from my analysis. I looked at the properties, the residential properties that are within 200 and 300 feet, and approximately 50% are non-conforming with regards to lot width and lot area. So our proposed lots, 6,2 and 1/2 feet wide versus the 75 required in the R4 Zone, and 6,250 square feet versus the 7,500 square feet required in the R4 Zone, I think are very typical and consistent with the neighborhood pattern of development. So I see no adverse impact to granting these variances.
Fletcher, would you address the engineering report?
Yes, I have a copy of Mr. Carley's report dated May 14th. I've had the chance to review it several times, and the only issue we would raise is that with due respect, we would request a waiver from the requirement to install sidewalks. There are really no sidewalks. Curbs are existing, but the sidewalks are not in the area. So that is our request. Other than that, we find nothing that cannot be addressed in revised plans, that this application should be approved and to the satisfaction of Mr. Carley.
Mr. Fletcher, what about the parking? What type of driveways, garages?
Okay, well, what's shown on the plan is a two-story home with a double-car garage and a double-wide driveway.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear, two-story home with a...
Two-story home with a two-car garage and an 18-foot-wide driveway. The applicant would like to reserve the right to put a smaller home. He hasn't done all his marketing, but regardless of which home he builds, it will meet the RSIS standards for parking, off-street parking. There'll either be four spaces or two spaces, but it'll meet the RSIS standards.
How big are the proposed homes in square feet?
I think I should refer to, Mr. Ginsburg is more familiar with that.
Mr. Ginsburg, answer that question for me. Please. Mr. Ginsburg, let me swear you in. Please raise your right hand. Swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, self-evident. All right, please state your name, spelling your last name.
Ginsburg, G-I-N-C-B-U-R-G.
And you're the principal of Builders Pro? Okay, thank you.
Would you address the question asked of the square foot?
Well, this depends on which model I will build, and both models are pretty famous in this town, with many of them. One of them is in the range of 2,100 square feet, or it could be 25, so between 21 and 25. And that will be decided later on, what market will feed the most for the people around.
And there're gonna be three, I'm sorry, three bedrooms or four bedrooms?
Four bedrooms, definitely, in both models. Two and a half bath, full basement, but the garages could be one-car garage or two-car garage.
To your knowledge, any underground oil tanks on the property?
No.
Okay, how about, I'm assuming there's no wells on the property either?
No.
Not in that part of North Brunswick?
And also, we scanned the property for potential underground oil tank by licensed contractor, and I have legal report that there is no underground oil tank.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Just really quick, Mr. Chair. Mr. Ginsburg, I'm just gonna caution you as you go forward, you do have to conform with the residential site improvement standards. And your driveways are 20 by 30, so you could park two cars off-street in the driveway. And right now, you're showing two-car garages. If you go down to a one-car garage, it's only three parking spots. So what came first, the chicken or the egg? There's a direct relationship between bedrooms and parking spots. So just be cognizant of that. And Mr. Fletcher, is...
Yeah, I think the applicant understands that.
You may end up with a two-car garage despite your best wishes.
Yeah, Michael, we had an application, I think, on Excelsior. Did we address the number of bedrooms on that application?
Yeah, that would be the tri-state builders' application, where I believe they initially came in front of this board for three lots, and then they amended their application to two, or was it, it was four? Yeah, so they amended it from four to three lots. They were all three veteran proposals, homes.
Not four?
They were all smaller lots, though. I mean, if I'm sorry to be correct, they were about 5,800 square feet, maybe?
They were smaller. The issue there was just the, if I may, Mr. Chair, the extent of the relief that was being requested, even from the R4 standards. I think they were a little bit smaller than 50 by 100s that were being proposed. And so when it came time for the hearings, the board wasn't comfortable with the degree of relief that was being requested from the bulk standards. And again, the board did use the R4 Zone standards at that time, and you gave them a little bit of a haircut, instead of it being four lots, and ended up being three.
Mr. Carley, what about the sidewalks and aprons? I know they want a waiver on that.
Mr. Fletcher's testimony is correct. There are no sidewalks in the neighborhood. The roadway is relatively new, it's curbed. What's that? Yeah, and it does have gutters there. I would just say, put aprons, provide aprons at the driveways as they enter onto the street. But there are no other sidewalks in the neighborhood.
Mr. Sermonero, that's acceptable?
Well, I'm not so certain that...
Yes, that's acceptable.
Again, our ordinance requires sidewalks, correct?
It does.
And I'm not so certain that we need to start somewhere. I mean, we do need to start somewhere.
They are interior lots, so they would terminate on either side of the property.
I understand that, but we do need to start somewhere.
We have a sidewalk fund? No.
We do need to, you know, I'm just cognizant of the fact. I'm just cognizant of the fact, just speaking aloud, that we need to start somewhere.
May I address that, if I may? It would seem to me that because of the change in the zoning, which is going to occur, and the distinct possibility that there may be many other homes built here, it would seem to me that the town may at some point want to address it with a general sidewalk ordinance, which would require everybody then to put the sidewalk in.
We do have a general sidewalk ordinance, and that's what we're referring to, with the requirement of sidewalks. And the waiver of that, I just am cognizant of the fact that we need to start somewhere. And I'm wondering if a continued waiver of that requirement is wise.
Well, I would ask council, because I'm not sure the answer to this. But if subsequent, even if there was a waiver here, if subsequently the township decided to impose a sidewalk on all of the present homeowners, I believe they could do that, and they could assess the homeowners for the sidewalks.
That would not be too popular.
Not to say this applicator from a sidewalk, that's not the purpose. But it seems to me that from a planning standpoint, from a safety standpoint, to stick a sidewalk, an interior sidewalk, and then have grass on one side and grass on the other, are you going to encourage then people to walk on the slippery grass to get to the sidewalk, to leave the sidewalks, and walk on the slippery grass again? It just doesn't seem that it's conducive to either planning or safety or anything else at that point.
Any other thoughts?
I agree with Mr. Boat.
Okay, okay. Well, I think you're, Mr. Farhat?
Yeah, no, I agree with, you know, this wasn't an I2 Zone, it's gonna be an R4 Zone. There is the definite possibility, most likely, it will be developed in the future. We need to start somewhere.
So I think you're hearing the sentiment of the board, council, so maybe you want to just confer with your client. Sure.
Mr. Chairman, relative to the potential for an awful lot of future residential development in that neighborhood, as the aerial view shows, it's just going to be infill going forward in the future. So that neighborhood's pretty well-developed, as it is.
The applicant addressed that just for a second, and I hear the board, so, not my first rodeo, I hear the board, but I think it's important to hear what he has to say from other areas where he was compelled to put a sidewalk in an area where there were none, and the experience that he encountered, and the claims that were made by fall downs as a result of it.
You know what I see? I see that if we allow sidewalks, then I can see the township forcing other people to do the sidewalks, and it'll be considerable cost for the other people to conform. So I'm not so sure if it's, I'm not so sure we should allow sidewalks just on the one property. I'd rather see the township, say, the whole area maybe, has to have sidewalks. And I think there are ways where they get funding or help, or sometimes it takes four or five years for people to put sidewalks up. So I think if we allow sidewalks, it's gonna open up the door for everybody else, they're gonna be forced to put sidewalks in.
But it's already required.
No, I understand that, but if the authority requires it, then what happens to the other people that are there? Are they just grandfathered in?
I could probably answer that. It would be highly, in fact, I've been representing municipalities for 25 years. I've never seen a municipality impose a sidewalk requirement on an existing homeowner. You know, it would just be incredibly burdensome and not a very popular political move by a municipality, but, you know, I, Mr. Sermonero, if Mr. Ginsburg wants to say anything, I can probably tell you he's gonna tell me that there have been fall downs on the sidewalk, that they don't remove the snow, but that's the property owner's burden.
Well, based upon what you said also, then you're gonna create a situation where there are existing homes there. So if the position's gonna be, as you say, you've never seen it, so now you're gonna have a sidewalk here, nothing here, nothing here, sidewalk here. It just, it doesn't, senses the wrong word.
No, no. I've seen sidewalks to nowhere, all over this central New Jersey.
If North Brunswick wanted to impose and enforce the ordinance, then fine. They should do it for everybody, even the existing ones. I don't know if they want to do that, but if they don't, as you say, 25...
Mr. Sermonero, I don't think that we can, I agree with our attorney. I don't necessarily think that we could go to our existing homeowners and say, "Our homeowners, please put sidewalks on your property." I think that if we had a sidewalk fund, the township would be able to do that. What we're discussing now is a new development where a developer is requesting a use variance or a bulk variance, and we're having discussion that our township requirements require sidewalks. And he's asking for a waiver of that requirement. And the issue is, before this board, is that something in light of the characteristics... And the issue is, before this board is, is, is that something in light of the characteristics of that neighborhood, is it something the board, for the board to consider? Or is the board cognizant of wanting to start someplace in, in the implementation of that ordinance? And, and I think that's something that this board will, will discuss with, with the, with the application.
I'm, just to add some flavor to the conversation-
I'm sorry, let me cut you.
Usually, what a board does not grant the waiver request from the applicant is when they have a corner property, because they always want to see a handicap depression, a crosswalk, and some access walk on either side of that. A lot of times, it could be a bus stop for children. Then, almost mandatory, you have to put a sidewalk in, so that then when they're waiting for the bus, they have sidewalk to stand on and not grass, mud, et cetera and whatnot. Usually, what ends up happening is that sidewalk continues, and Mr. Ginsburg may be able to add some flavor to this, because he had approvals for corner, for corner property approvals, where they actually wanted the sidewalk, not only crosswalk with a short extension, but the entire frontage of the walk leading up to that corner crosswalk, sidelined. On interior properties, I mean, just basically, I mean, you guys have been sitting here long enough routinely, on interior properties where the entire neighborhood has no sidewalk, you've been gracious enough to grant the waiver. The start somewhere approach is also valid, so I guess what I'm, I guess what I'm trying to say is-
Subsequent point.
-it's your call. But just to give you the history of sidewalks.
Anything else, oh, anything else, Mr. Sermonaro?
No.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, if you want to open up to the-
Well, there, there's no more experts to testify to this?
No, that's the-
Okay, at this point, we would like to open up to the public to have, if they have any comment on this application.
Motion to open up to the public, Mr. Chair?
Second.
Like to open us up to the public, Mr. Chair? Make a motion to open us up to the public?
I did, Mr. Chair, is there anybody? Anyone in the public? Motion to close, Mr. Chair?
Okay, a motion to close, no one from the public is going to comment on this application.
Mr. Sermonaro, we only have five eligible voters here this evening.
I understand that.
If you'd like, and I will do this on occasion, if you'd like me to poll the board to see if anybody has any issues with this application, I'll be glad to do that for you.
I would ask that in light of two members not being here.
All right, so I'll start down on my end. Mr. Farhat, any?
I, I just want clarification, just, I understand, according to this, you're comparing it to the I-2 zone, but knowing now that it is gonna be an R-4 zone, other than the lot with, with an area, are you meeting all the requirements as far as setback, side?
Yeah, the R-4.
Okay.
Do you have any issues, Mr. Farhat? No? Mr. Abode?
I, I think that Mr. Proetti said it best, the, based upon the master plan revision and reexamination, and our, our planning board pending our, our governing bodies' adoption of their recommendations are, are considering amending the zone to an R-4. I think that the application, and I think that the planner's testimony that the, the site is particularly suitable speaks to itself.
Mr. Chairman?
I have no problem with this application, it seems to be, I know it's been done before, and it actually enhanced the neighborhood, and I don't, I do not have a problem with all of that application, and I think that it will, it will be benefit to the, to the community to have new housing in, in, in that area. As for the sidewalks, I, I think it would be harmful to put a sidewalk to grass and nothing there. If the township wanted to start with, with that from the, you know, have everybody do it, then I think that's up to the township at this point. But I have no problem with the application.
Mr. Manley?
I'm not gonna speak about the sidewalk, but as far as the application, I don't have a problem with that.
I don't have a problem with the application in light of the changes in the master plan to the R-4 zone, I have no problem with it.
Okay, at this point, I don't think there are any special considerations, did I, we miss anything?
I just, in terms of our application, I, I, well, I have, I have a motion with some conditions, I mean, when we get to that point- Oh, just for the record also, Mr. Chairman, I did receive letters from Mr. Sermonaro's office addressed to, I guess, the adjacent property owners to determine if there was any interest in selling their property to abate the variance relief.
And I thank you for reminding me, there was, there was no response.
And there was no response, okay. And I'm just gonna mark that A2, I'll mark these series of letters A2. Okay.
Mr. Chair, I would make a, a motion to approve the, the application. I, I believe that the applicant's request, the, the site is particularly suited for the applicant's proposed use. I think that, as Mr. Proetti said, our, our planning board in its master plan revision has made those recommendations to our governing board, which is consistent with their planner's recommendations. I, I think that I would agree with their planner that the, the site is too small to develop for its industrial use and probably could not be developed for its industrial use. Mr. Ginsburg has come before this board on, on a number of occasions, I, I can remember a few, he's a reputable builder, he does a, a fine job, he's, he'll continue, I'm certain will continue to put a, a fine product in the area, so I, I'm comfortable with that. So I, my, my application, Mr. Chair, would be to approve the application subject to compliance with the recommendations of our engineer's report dated May 14, 2018. The, the issue that I weigh is the sidewalk issue, and I, I brought it up, and I'm cognizant of it, and, and I asked the board to excuse me, because Mr. Proetti swayed me with his argument. I believe we have to start somewhere. I do believe we have to start somewhere, and, and, and I'm cognizant of the fact that we have to start somewhere, but Mr. Proetti swayed me with the safety concerns of having an, an interior lot that's, that's not surrounded with, with other adjoining sidewalks, and, and those concerns are, are, at least to me, a, a concern that we should consider. If it was a corner lot, it would be, I guess, a, a different argument on my, on my side, so I'm, I'm, my application is not going to be for the imposition of a sidewalk, and I would, it would be to include the waiver.
All right, so a waiver for the sidewalk, however, I think as Mr. Carley indicated, we want to see aprons?
Yes.
Okay.
And, and obviously, the, the homes, you know, and that would be-
Okay, second. We need a second.
Okay.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Farhat, any other? Motion to approve, roll call.
Mr. Abode?
Yes.
Mr. Farhat?
Yes.
Ms. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Paul Castro?
Yes.
Mr. Batt?
Yes.
Okay, at this time, I would like to thank, the presentation was made very well. Mr. Ginsburg has been before many times, and has done a great job for the town of North Brunswick, we appreciate it, and at this point, I commend the, the cleanness of the application, and on behalf of the zoning board of Exauston, I thank you for being here tonight.
Motion to adjourn, Mr.? Motion to adjourn?
Okay, may we have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Motion, Mr. Chair?
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, meeting will be adjourned.